All right, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Court Press and posted on municipal board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to finally put it in silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me.
Please leave us.
For the purposes to comply, the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on a nation, we are now in this law with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, May 13th, 2019. Councilwoman Elvan Clayton?
Here.
Mayor John Mark?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Seifert?
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Rick Lambert? Barbara Kitzak?
Here.
I'd just like one moment to welcome our conflict attorney here, Yolanda. She's coming to join us today in Jackstead. The agenda remains as stated, so let's bring up the minutes for May 6th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to motion to approve the minutes for May 6th.
Second act.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I abstain.
I abstain.
And I abstain.
Okay, 406 Deal Lake LLC.
Good evening. If I may, Andrew Karas of the firm Fox Rochelle on behalf of the applicant. I don't have any professionals to call, Todd actually wasn't planning on it anyway. I was going to call my client Peter Siegel, he's not here yet. If the board wants me to wait for Mr. Siegel. Just to give you a little background why we're here, if it takes one minute. The applicant for 406 Deal Lake LLC, they own a multifamily residential property at 406 Deal Lakes in the R3 Zone, 36 residential units within 42-story buildings. Previously, the board had granted an application to add seven parking spaces onto the property. The resolution was granted on December 1st, 2017. One of the spaces was going into the right-of-way. Since then, we've decided to eliminate that one space. So consequently, we're just adding six spaces, taking one out of the right-of-way. That's literally the extent of the amended application here tonight. Could call my client to confirm simply that and how deep basically the extent of the application.
Was there any change to the layout then?
No, eliminating those spaces.
Just eliminated and there was no reconfiguration of the lot in any way?
No, we're not going into the right-of-way, we're eliminating that space.
So everything that we heard in the prior presentation remit stands except for that one space that was going to approach into the right-of-way if you receive the approval. True?
That is correct.
Okay, then do we have, is your client here?
No, as I indicated, waiting for Mr. Siegel to arrive, he has not arrived yet.
Okay, so then what would be the normal course that we could just take? Do you say that if nothing has changed, you're asking, are you asking for us to remove, to amend the resolution or what are you asking for?
It is an application for an amended approval. So what we're going to do, or what we're asking for, is to approve the amended ten hours submitted, removing that one space to make it form to the site plan that had been prepared that is dated revision date of October 8th, 2018.
October what?
8th, 2018.
Can we just have, what are we looking at when you're saying that?
On my mark, it's A1.
Yes. What is?
It is a site plan prepared by Michael Savory's Associate Architects that has revision date of 10/8/2018. On my mark, it's A1. Today is the 13th.
Can I ask you a question, Barbara?
Sure.
Mr. Karas, was this a, did this, did this application go to the city council or did you decide to withdraw the?
We initially had submitted it, but based upon conversation I was having, we decided instead of getting the right-of-way approval, just to eliminate that one space.
Okay, so all you're doing then is you're shrinking a couple of those parking spaces by about six, four to six inches and, but the planting is going to be the same?
We'll do all the planting with that one.
So, so we're looking at the site plan revised, what date?
October 18th, 2018.
Right, I'm looking at one that is March 8th, 2019. Is that the right one?
I may have, I'm sorry, I want to say March 8th, 2019. I have too many.
Okay, so can you just look at as to where, what am I looking at? What's being removed?
There was, when we look at the plan, the bottom row on your plans had an additional space next to one that's number?
Number six?
That is correct.
So there was one that you wanted to add past number six.
That's correct.
Now you're outside of the right-of-way.
That is correct.
Okay.
There was a number seven next to the number six, that's correct.
I see.
So A1 is going to be with the revision date 3/8/2019, it was my mistake.
Okay. Does the, so the, so you think the plantings are going to go into that right-of-way at this point?
Correct.
As you?
Exactly, Sean.
Okay.
Is new parking space number three on the right-of-way also?
That will be out of the right-of-way.
Couple inches on the other spaces up there.
Just to clarify for the record, at least I was under the impression, and I apologize because I'm new here today, that there were two spaces that approached into the right-of-way. You're saying that one was removed?
The one that approaches and number three, look at this, it looks like it's right on board, but we'll make sure number three does not go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so there's an absolute zero encroachment onto the, into the city right-of-way and you're, and the amount of spaces remain minus one.
Correct. So we'll have a total of, I believe, just I didn't even count, they'll have their 13 existing, six new spaces, plus 10 that are in the garage.
Well, actually, looks like the plantings are in the right-of-way. So there is an encroachment in the right-of-way.
But what work with the city to unify and, but we're not doing parking spaces with them.
Understand.
Constructed.
All the other requests are going to be adhered to the enclosure around the?
Exactly. I do have Mr. Siegel that can confirm what I presented.
Chief Speaker, please. We're referring to testimony given during these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Excuse me for being late.
I state your name for the record.
Peter Siegel.
Thank you.
Mr. Siegel, are you related to 406 Deal Lake LLC as well?
I'm the owner.
Are you familiar with the plans that are submitted in front of you, A1 for identification?
I am.
Has revision date 3/2019, correct?
Yes.
And you've prepared it at your direction?
Yes.
And we're eliminating one of the spaces from the prior approval, am I correct?
Correct.
So all the parking spaces will be out of the right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
No work with the city and do the plantings as reflected in your comments?
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Does the board have any other questions regarding this? Nothing?
I think there was some question regarding a drainage or drainage plan.
We're not doing any drainage, the same as the prior application, prior approval. We didn't do any drainage in that, we're not going to do any.
Is there anything else in Jason's letter that we feel we need to address?
Yeah, I think, I think that there's, there's a question of how do you, how do we really deal with this because this application was already heard from.
Right.
It's already heard once.
Right.
The only thing that they're asking for, and we've already made our requests as to what we were looking for.
Right.
To go back again seems?
Unfair.
Unfair.
Yeah.
So you're asking for, for number two to be amended. Does anyone disagree with that statement that we, our chance already came and went, unfortunately, if there were some other additional things that we want to do. So, okay, now I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions regarding this application?
Yes, please.
In this testimony? Okay. Okay. Will public, any, can I get a motion for public comment?
Move it. Second.
Okay, open for public comment? No?
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. No comments? All right, let's move on. Then can I get a motion to approve based on what, the testimony that we remove, we amend the resolution and remove number two based on the fact that the, the park, the parking space that was encroaching on the right-of-way will no longer do so and no parking space will encroach on the right-of-way, neither will anything in this project encroach in the right-of-way and the applicant will adhere to everything else that was in this resolution as well as working with the city on making sure that all the plantings are done and accordance to the city.
Excuse me, I don't think that's what the applicant said.
Okay.
You go back to item number two and he said the, the plantings are in the right-of-way and so that's still in that, number two has to be modified to remove one of the parking spaces, but to leave the, the plantings?
Need for the plant?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
That, that's in agreement.
Yeah, and that has to go back to the council.
Does it? I don't think that.
No.
Okay, the council approves that one? Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that I believe that the council did not approve is the fact that the parking space should not go into the right-of-way.
Okay, sorry about that, my mistake.
That's okay.
So motion to amend the original approval, striking condition number two.
Councilwoman Elvan Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Mark?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Barbara Kitzak?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Barbara, before you, can we call a short recess? I have to go get the board's copy in next.
Okay. All right, we have a short recess?
Oh, you got to make a motion for a short recess?
Move to recess for five seconds.
Okay, Monday, May 13th, 2019, 7:20 PM. Councilwoman Elvan Clayton?
Here.
Mayor John Mark?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Barbara Kitzak?
Here.
Okay. Our next application, CNC Cookman Development LLC, 722 and 724 Cookman Avenue, for a return visit.
If I may, Andrew Karas again of the firm Fox Rochelle on behalf of the applicant. We got through most of the application previously, we have the engineer to finish up with tonight. Mr. Curley?
Please, Chief Speaker, please. We're referring to testimony given during these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Robert Curley.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Curley has appeared before the board on numerous occasions, but I'll have to brief his credentials on the record.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Got my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in Newark College of Engineering, NJIT. Been the planning board engineer for Bricktown for seven years. Was the alternate planning board engineer for Brielle, alternate planning board engineer for Island Heights, appeared before this board since probably 2000.
Thank you.
Mr. Curley, are you familiar with this project, am I correct?
That's correct.
You prepare plans relative to the project?
That's correct.
Those plans that are up on the boards in my right?
That's correct.
Why don't you go up by your plans and let's go through those for this application. How do we first, the leisure vision plans are?
11/26.
National engineering, and we're on it, says that I believe?
A16.
A16. Okay, go over that, what is the morphis A16 for that application, let's go through.
It's sheet number two of three entitled Dimension, Grading, Utility, and Lighting Plan. The area of the primary site plan for CNC Cookman Development LLC.
Looking at that page two or three, what is it up to look at?
So we have, there's three different views. The view all the way on the left is just the dimensioning, the dimensioning view. View in the center is the grading and utility plan and the view on the right is the lighting plan.
And in terms of the lighting plan, why don't we go through that briefly?
Well, as was previously testified to, from an engineering standpoint, this, I'm going to say it again, it's a dull application, the building occupies the entire lot, so there's really not a whole lot of engineering that can be done at all in the project. We are proposing some site lighting, we're proposing site lighting across the rear of the property to light that alleyway and also across the western side of the building. There's also some recessed lighting in the canopy, underneath the front canopy, the alcove, and also on the north, yes, north, west corner of the building. And then also there's a recessed lighting in the rear stairway and access. There's one other light that's above the door access, which is again all of western way, underneath the canopy and on the western side of the sun.
And the nature of the lighting in the alleyways, do we provide for safety, not back alley?
That's correct.
What about on the southern buildings?
Basically the same thing, it's lighting up the sidewalk that blocks the building and a portion of the alleyway.
Okay. There are other pages to your plan?
I have the cover sheet and the detail sheet, but basically it's, yeah, it's pretty correct.
Okay, you've had the chance to go through the reports that were generated by the board planner and also board engineer, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And the board planner's report has been marked as A12 for identification, I just want to go through some of the issues that have been pointed out in this report. Going to page three of what's marked as A12, the parking and parking report, reflects in there that the plans and building height, we're looking for a variance, a C variance, and the requested height is going to be less than 10% difference in the permitted height required a C2 variance, do you agree with that?
That's correct.
Continuing on. There's much in here for Mr. Curley. Going to page seven of the report. There's a question with regard to the electric meters indicating they should be enclosed in the meter closet either outside or inside the building.
We're going to be locating them, they are going to be on the outside of the building, the Jersey Central Power and Light does not want them inside, so that's all.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Thanks. The proposed electric meters will be located on the rear of the building and that's consistent with what Jersey Central Power and Light has requested.
Going to page nine of the report, 2.6 Utilities, NGA, the applicants advise the satellite or other telecom facilities will be provided, requiring that any cable telecom utilities provided to the building be placed underground. Comment on that?
And we will comply with the providing of the utilities underground for the proposed project. Also, in conversations with the applicant, he indicated that there would not be any satellites, satellite dishes placed on the building.
There'll be no exterior satellite dishes on this building, am I correct?
That's correct.
No work with the utility company, the order of high when the other connections are going to be provided to the building.
That's correct.
Going down to western mark as A13 for identification for insight, which is dated February 21st, 2019. Going to page two of that report. Regarding the major site net, please review their number of comments. Comment number one, indicates in there that the mirrors of firehouse should be shown as well as other features, and we put all two boards engineers, I'm very okay with doing that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, number two, existing proposed mentions will set back, so we add to the national plan, are we sure with that?
No, we will add that information.
That will be an additional approval, should be more grant this application, am I correct?
That's correct.
Number four has come with regard to the roof plan, indicating several roof drains are being proposed as an additional detail for the destination of the stormwater captured on the roof. Comment on that?
Yes, during, I did have an opportunity to speak to the board engineer and his request, which is actually enumerated in, back farther in the, in the review letter, is to have all of the roof leaders tied into a below-ground pipe that will, that'll end up going across the street and tie into the existing municipal system. So there won't be any discharge onto sidewalk at all for the building.
Going to page three of six, number five, NGA soil bearings have not been provided. You'll provide those at the appropriate time?
That's correct.
In terms of staging plan, you're not going to, or your understanding is all construction will be with the canopy over, the sidewalk, it won't be in construction until that will be in the street, am I correct?
That's correct, and the sidewalk across the frontage of the property will remain open at all times.
Continuing on with regards to comments, page four, 12 X or actual testament regarding the utility connections for the site, comment on that?
Our proposal for sanitary is to tie into the rear of the property, there's an existing sanitary connection there now. We will upgrade it, as far as water, it'll come into the front of the building and electricity will also be in the back of the building, so those are the three major connections into the building.
13, the comment is with regard to solar erosion, settlement control plan, can you clarify whether or not approvals are required from the freehold soil consideration?
The overall lot is less than 5,000 square feet, so we would be exempt and I'll, we will, will apply or submit an exemption letter to freehold soils.
Number 14 is a comment with regard to the stormwater, you just commented on that, am I correct?
That's correct.
I believe we've already gone for recyclables, but your understanding is that there'll be sufficient capacity in the building to handle one week recyclable materials, am I correct?
That's correct, and it'll be with a private hauler.
17, considerations for the application, what proposed walkways, ramps, and cycle on the frontage of the proposed building, are to comply with the requirements of ADA? Comment on that?
All of the slopes will meet it. Maximum slope required by ADA.
Lastly, comment 22, request that screening of, well, steering equipment and gas meters located in the alleyway. Comment on that?
Again, this is at the rear of the building, it's not going to be in public view. In, in speaking both with Jersey Central Power and Light and New Jersey Natural Gas, they prefer to have the meters exposed so that their meter readers can readily access the meters. So again, our, our position is we, we're going to comply with what New Jersey Natural Gas and Jersey Central Power and Light have requested.
So the questions I have this way?
If I may, I just wanted to just touch on one or two things.
Sure.
So in regard to the variance, there was some testimony, quite a bit of testimony that was provided for the reason why the height variance is pushing the building higher. And again, with, with the idea of being consistent with the redevelopment plan for existing building reuse, maintaining the existing floor to ceiling height ultimately pushes the building up and creates the variance that we're seeking. Our proposed development is definitely in character with the central business district. There are nine other properties within the central business district that are consistent with three stories of residential above commercial. We're also, again, pushing the local objectives of the central business district redevelopment plan, adding to the 24-hour presence and providing a desirable place to live. With those facts and the fact that, again, this is in character with, with the proposed, with the proposed central business district and development that has occurred within the central business district, I believe that this variance, the height variance can be granted without any detriment to the public good or zone plan.
And as you've already indicated, doesn't require a D variance relief because we're not more than 10 feet within 10% of the permitted height, am I correct?
That's correct.
So I have to disclose?
Does the board have any questions?
I've got a couple, Barbara.
Sure.
Going back to item 22 on page five.
Which, which report?
Inside report. The, excuse me, the building to the east of that has some sort of protection, I'm not sure which, I think there are bollards in that alleyway protecting the meters.
And actually, that's a mandatory requirement for Jersey's, for the New Jersey Natural Gas, and we are proposing bollards across the rear on our property line. The rear of the building, I, you know, I misspoke my testimony, I said the building occupies the entire width of the lot. There's about three and a half feet across the rear of, the rear of the building that is not being developed and we are going to be proposing our bollards along our property line and that will protect the gas meters.
Okay, is there any, is there any possibility those bollards could be moved a bit to the north to widen that alleyway? In other words, the alleyway is fairly restricted, I don't remember the exact dimension, but...
Right now, it's three and a half feet from the?
Property line to the building, right?
To the building.
And then south of that to the alleyway is extended, was it 12 feet or something?
Probably 10.
Well, I'm saying is can you move the bollards to the north a little bit to get, widen that alleyway out?
I, I would, I would want to maintain the three-foot clearance to, to the meters at least, so we could move it six inches in.
I think any bit would help, you know, in that alleyway. Also, going back to your prior testimony concerning some of the elements in the building, you're, you have planters on the building, correct?
That's correct.
And they're made, they're fabricated from Corten steel?
Yeah, I would, I would want to defer to the architect.
We can bring the architects back up.
To answer that question because I don't want to say the wrong.
Okay.
Or answer incorrectly.
Okay.
But as was previously testified to, we will provide an exhibit to the council for the encroachment of the parapet as well as the planters. So that, that will ultimately have to go.
My other questions are from the architect. Thank you.
If for any right-of-way encroachment, you have to go back before the mayor, before the mayor council approval.
Well, my, my questioning about the, the bollards was to move them into the property.
Yeah, but they're within the property.
Yeah, yeah. I was just thinking widen out that space. Oh, one other quick question, on your, your exhibit here, none of them show the width of that alleyway, especially the one with your lighting plan, can you just roughly give us an idea where the, that westerly side of the, the north-south alleyway is? No, the, the other side, Mr. Curley, the north, north-south alleyway, that one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Remming north.
On the eastern portion.
Yeah.
It's about 22 and a half feet.
Okay.
I just knew that.
The western side.
The western side.
On the western side.
Yes, the western side, not the eastern side.
Western, correct.
Yes, okay.
Western side.
Okay.
And just show us roughly where that is on that plan. So you have your, your lighting diagram, just show us where it is roughly.
It's basically to the border.
It's basically to the border of the, of what's depicted on the plan.
Wow, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Can you just review one more time, if you don't mind, on number, on line, on page three of six of the inside plan? Once again, the staging, do I, because it's, can you just review that one more time? What the staging is?
So, the building occupies the entire lot. There's not going to be the ability to store any materials other than within the building footprint. We intend to protect the sidewalk with scaffolding, similar to just down the street on Cookman Avenue. There's, there's a covered, covered walkway with scaffolding above it. That's the exact type of protection that we intend to maintain during construction.
Do you, do you see that there's going to be any impact on Cookman at all as far as parking?
None at all.
There's no impact?
None at all.
During the build?
I would...
If, if I may, maybe when we're doing our water connection, we are going to have to dig up the street. There, there will be a temporary, a temporary during the daytime. It'll be plated at night if, if need be for utility construction.
Or mechanicals are going up on the roof. They kick a crane to bring it up there and stuff like that.
So, we're not talking about dumpsters? We're not talking about anything that will be there for long periods?
Not at all.
For anything soon?
Not at all.
Okay. And at this point, no one lives in the building, so you were not, you don't have to move people to where they're parking today to someplace else. Nobody lives in the building today?
Correct. That's correct.
I have a question about, oh, sorry. I have a question about the, the side steps in the alley.
In the back, the rear of the...
No, not the rear, sorry. The...
Oh, on the, the western.
The western.
Westerly facade.
Westernly facade steps. Is there any, is there a possibility that that could be made handicap accessible? Because my understanding is when you come in that side door, you are on the ground level that the retail is at. Although, what's your sidewalk there? It may not be wide enough, anyway.
And our intention is just to reconstruct what currently exists.
Okay.
Only, only, right now, it's not in good repair. The railings, the concrete adjacent to the railings look cracking, so it's gonna be replaced in kind, but it'll be replaced with new construction.
Gotcha.
But in terms of handicap accessibility to the site, that through the front of the building...
It's still, yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the plan is to pay into the parking plan or...
Yes. That's correct.
I know that there was one other item, and I don't think that it's an engineering item, but if anybody else has, let's stick to what we just heard regarding engineering. Does the board have any other questions regarding engineering?
No.
Like to, any public questions regarding the testimony that we just heard? Yes.
Hi. Good evening. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I'd like a little more discussion about the lighting plan that was presented. A bit more detail, please. Do you have depictions of the lighting fixtures that are proposed?
Yes, they were part of the application that was submitted to the planning board.
Could I see that, please?
Okay. You're referring to these here in the lower right-hand corner?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is where we're at. We're on page, page three of the plans I presented to you here.
Okay. One of these appears different than the other. Are there any differences on the building?
That's correct. It's depicted on the lighting plan.
Which one goes where?
So, the top one is on the rear of the building, and the lower one is on the western facade.
Okay. So, the one at the rear of the building that you're proposing appears to be adjustable. Is that correct? Has a swivel on it?
No. It'll be, it'll be mounted 90 degrees.
It has a swivel here, right?
It'll be mounted 90 degrees.
It's adjustable, all right.
It'll be mounted 90 degrees.
I'm asking if it's be mounted 90 degrees. I'm asking if it's adjustable. There's a hinge right here. Is this adjustable?
So, it depends, it depends what you mean by adjustable. Let me finish. When you set it for a particular way, then it, it's not adjustable. It's set at that position. It's not as though it's gonna be a move in your life. Am I correct with that?
That's correct. I'm asking a simple question.
Could it be adjusted? I'm certain it could be, yes.
Thank you. Okay. This light here, which is proposed on the other side of the building, this is fixed in place. This is non-adjustable in terms of where the light projects, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you have an adjustable fixture in the rear, a non-adjustable fixture to the side, the west side. Okay. Thank you very much. What type of bulbs are those?
LED.
And what are the lighting levels that these fixtures emanate?
These are depicted on the lighting plan.
Okay. Can you explain this a little bit? There's concentric circles here. What exactly does that mean?
So, the outside circle is a one-half foot candle valium on all of these light fixtures.
The outside of one and a half foot candle?
That's correct.
The inner circle is?
It ranges, it goes to a high of 24 foot candles immediately underneath of the light. These, these, these fixtures direct light straight down. It angles out slightly, but it directs the lights straight down. The fixture has a frosted glass on it and...
Okay. You had mentioned the foot candles on the inner circle, just 20-something?
Yes, 24.
Okay. What's a typical full moon foot candle?
Between one and one and a half.
One and one and a half in, in a full moon at nighttime? And you're testifying that directly under these lights is 20 something?
Four.
24. 24 times a full moon, right?
No, that, that's not accurate. It's not 24 times. That's not accurate.
Okay. It's not a linear scale?
That's correct.
At the rear of the building, you have similar lines projecting outward. Is the explanation the same for that? The outer ring is a half?
This fixture's different. This fixture directs the light straight down. It does not have any true throw out whereby the light that comes down out of the light is recessed into the light. This one, the light that's on the western facade...
I'm asking you about that.
Let, let him finish.
The light on the western facade projects the light down. However, the, the glass that you can physically see is not, is not recessed into the light. So, to answer your questions, the, there are similar light levels directly underneath. There's, it goes up to 21 and a half in the rear alley.
Back to, back to my question. The concentric circles, it's the same explanation as the other lights. The outer rings here, these outer rings are .5.
That's correct.
Okay. I see a crosshatched area at the top there. What is that?
It's an existing, existing building?
There's a building there.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So, these lights are projecting up against the building?
That's not accurate, no. The lights are mounted 12 feet tall. They reject the light down.
Okay. Your concentric circles, you're indicating otherwise. You're projecting light up against the building?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. So, there are three in the rear from what I can tell, correct?
That's correct.
And four on the side.
That's correct.
Okay.
There are seven.
Is there any street lighting in the neighborhood here?
There are. There's some, there's some cobra heads that are located along the open avenue.
Now, this, this 20, 23, 24, what was it, the maximum lighting level?
24.
24? They add together as these rings.
That's not accurate, no.
How, how, explain that.
Each fixture, each fixture does, it's not additive. It's not additive.
Explain how it is. You have concentric circles.
The light levels are depicted on the plan based upon the light fixtures, the location and the height of mounting. The mounting height on the side of the building is nine feet. The mounting height on the rear of the building is 15.
Oh, okay. Could you go back to the depiction of the fixtures, please? So, this bottom one here, this is a face-on view without light, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You're saying that that's gonna be mounted at what height?
Nine feet.
Nine feet. So, this lens here, these three little windows are going to be shining light horizontally out of it.
All right. Warner, we're way past the three minutes. What is your direct question? What's your direct question? Do you have any other direct questions about...
I'm trying to understand the, the lighting.
It's already been asked and answered, as far as I'm concerned, unless somebody else feels otherwise.
Okay. I'll conclude then.
Go ahead. If you feel, if you feel differently, speak up.
I would like a clarification in our report. Can you hear, is, can I come through? Okay. But lighting on the architectural plans is slightly different than what's shown on the site plan. So, if they, if they could just, you know, I, I wasn't here for the previous testimony. Is there anything that was resolved before?
So, there was a question that was raised in the planner's review in regard to the types and quantities of fixtures that are being proposed. So, there are recessed lights that are, that is one fixture that are, that are under the canopy, those, those two.
And just to clarify, do you mean recessed into the ceiling?
Correct, into the ceiling. So, those, those are, those are fixture that, that is enumerated in the architectural plans. So, those are located under the, under the canopies in the front entrance and at the northwest corner.
So, they're not contributing light outside of the...
Correct. They're, they're, they're hogs that just illuminate the area immediately below that. Likewise, there's a similar fixture that is located at the rear entrance. Same, same situation. It's recessed into the ceiling.
So, they're not contributing to the exterior?
Directly straight down. And then there's another fixture that's above, which is a, which is a building code, or it's a building code requirement to have a light above a door. And that is located at the rear entrance that abuts the western facade.
With those steps?
That's correct. So, in addition to those three fixtures, so that would be the, excuse me, two fixtures. That would be the canopy lights, the light that's above the door, which is, it's a small, small fixture, and then the lights, the lights that are across the rear. So, we have one, two, three, four, five fixtures total. The fixture that is depicted on the architectural plans indicates a circular fixture. That was modified, that the lighting that, that came out of that light was insignificant. Wasn't even lighting the sidewalk at all. So, that's why there's an modification. Same manufacturer. This was discussed with the architect as far as trying to keep it to the architectural.
And the design of the lights that you include within your plan keeps it up or keeps it too up with the design of the building?
That's correct.
And you have, the rear of the property between the two buildings, you have a dark alley there if you didn't have any light, am I correct?
That's correct.
And you, you would just put light up until your property line, you'd leave that entire alley completely pitch black, am I correct?
No, because there's spotlight mounted on it.
Well, let me ask, so, to, to, to that point, currently, there is an existing utility pole that is right at the corner of the building. That utility pole's going to be removed. So, there won't be any ability to mount a cobra head and, or a spotlight on it. So, that's why we're lighting up the rear building with, building mounted lights.
And for safety concerns, of course, you have an alley that would be dark, otherwise in the road to build.
Correct.
And what about the side?
Saving the city money, providing light, lighting through the building instead of a fixture that would be built in the city on an annual basis.
We're taking care of that, am I correct?
That's correct.
And on the side of the building, you have an extended alleyway on the western portion of the building, am I correct?
That's correct.
And because you've added lighting for safety concerns, so people walking in and hiding, hiding, they can see where to go, am I correct?
That's correct.
Like to...
Are you okay, um, questions? Yes. Sounds good.
If I may finish, please?
Quick question, I'm sorry. Just to Mr. Carris, I don't think Mr. Curley can answer this question, but to the extent that the architect's plan still differs from this plan, it will be amended?
It'll be, yeah, there are a number of amendments we're gonna make as condition of any...
So, anything that was testified to today, that's what you're going to say, that anything in that architectural plan is going to be amended to be consistent with this one? Very good. Thank you.
Chair, may I finish?
We're way past your three minutes. Is, are we talking about lighting?
I'm not aware that there's a time limit for questioning witnesses.
There is.
May I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Why do you find it necessary to light areas that are outside the bounds of your property?
For the safety of pedestrians walking around the building and accessing the building.
What measures are you taking to prevent glare?
Glare.
Glare from these lighting fixtures?
All the lights being directed in a downward direction onto the side.
If one were to be, say, 20 feet away from the building, your testimony is that there would be no glare? You wouldn't see these lights?
Of course, you're going to see lights. I'm not gonna say that. There's frosted lens in front of the light. I, I wouldn't look into this glare. It's going to be an illuminated area. And again, it's being illuminated for the safety of pedestrians, not only for this building, but for anyone that would be walking in that alley or potentially using it for...
Okay.
Just from your experience, just your proven light, lighting that you designed and your for this building to make sure that the areas around the building are...
Absolutely.
Just last question. You had mentioned the frosted lenses. They are, they are going to be visible then. Your testimony is that looking at these lights, the frosted lenses will be visible?
On the, on the western facade, yes.
Why not on the southern facades?
Those lights are, the, the light is physically in, up into the fixture itself, and it's directed straight down.
Your, your diagram indicates otherwise.
That's an argumentative question. The diagram does not indicate otherwise.
Shows three lenses pointing out horizontally.
I'm gonna turn that comment up here.
Okay. I'll, I'll comment later. Thank you.
Do our city professionals have any other questions? Any board, board questions? Okay. Motion to open for a public comment?
So, moved.
Second.
This also has a three-minute limit? Do you have any questions to?
Do you swear from the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Warner Baumgartner, city historian, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. I haven't seen any of this application except for tonight, so I can really only comment on the lighting scheme as I've been asking questions about. And I have to tell you, this is terrible. This is a horrible lighting scheme. I come before this board numerous times trying to get you to be sensitized to light pollution, excessive lighting levels, unwanted glare, things of this nature that are modern technology. And this is probably the worst that I've seen in a long time. These fixtures, I can tell you, I know these fixtures. These fixtures are exceedingly bright, really, really bright, and they provide a lot of glare horizontally away from the building. They're like, they're like security floodlights, essentially, is what these are. They're not architectural lights. They don't provide a lighting level which is human in scale. They just are blinding lights, and they will do nothing to make this project a good project, let alone provide any sense of architectural style for the community. The argument is always made, oh, it's for safety. The argument is always made, oh, it's for safety, it's for safety. You know what? Excessive lighting is unsafe, because the human eye cannot see at night after being exposed to bright lights. You all see it on the roads when you're driving down the highway. You curse and you shake your fist at the guy with the bright headlights coming at you, don't you? The bright blue lights, the bright white lights. Turn off your high beams, you say to the guy, as he whizzes by you and blinds you. Well, this is the same thing. This is a stationary source of high-intensity glare, the way this is designed. There are much more modern ways to deal with lighting this appropriately, which would not provide glare and would be a very nice addition to the building. I implore you to reject this lighting plan in its entirety and do something that really makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else want any other public comment? Motion to close the public comment?
So moved. Second.
Are there any comments from the board on this application?
Actually, I've got a couple of questions on yours.
Okay, actually, we should do that. We should do that, because this has been a two-part series here. So, why don't we bring up the architect? That will open up, obviously, questions and comments also.
Assume, no, the questions, we're not going through the entire application.
No, no, no. No, this is what the questions are that the board has regarding the application.
Can you say it again? Do you swear affirming testimony during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Robert Feinstein.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to start out by asking you about the steel planters, both on the side of the building and out on the sidewalk. I think one of the plans indicates they're Corten steel.
Correct. So, the actual construction of the box may be of another material. We would wrap that material in Corten steel, so maybe a marine-grade plywood or dense glass with steel frame. So, we haven't gotten into the exact engineering of the box, but it will be wrapped in Corten steel.
Okay. What are you going to do about the rusting factor of Corten steel?
Sure. So, Corten steel, while I'm not a scientist and can attest to exactly how it works, this is the process that, as I understand it. So, the material is pre-engineered to rust, so over a short amount of time, within six months typically on projects we've used, that it will self-rust, and then it locks. There's no sealer, there's no anything. If that leaches onto the brick, we would wash it, clean it, and then that would be it. It will not be a contin... Corten is designed to not continually rust.
Yes, once it gets that film on, it's designed to...
Correct, to lock in.
And how are you going to handle the rust that continues? Let me ask a question. The building planters, ones that are building-mounted?
Correct.
Okay. Does Corten steel continue to rust?
No. Once, again, over a short period of time? No. Once the Corten steel rusts, that's it. It doesn't continue to rust. That's why you, that's why we specify Corten. You could do our own version, where we take some steel and let it rust, and then it will continue to rust, but Corten steel does not rust indefinitely.
Okay, I don't believe that's the accurate description of that. If you ride along any of the highways that were put in, say, between the late 50s and the early 70s that use Corten steel, you'll see that the abutments are all stained with rust.
I cannot attest to products specified 50 years ago or non-architectural. Corten, I have no familiarity with those products. I only know what we're specifying.
It's been my experience that that continues to rust and it continues to run that, those rust streaks onto whatever it's mounted on, whether it be the sidewalk or the side of the building. If you're going to use Corten steel, I think that there has to be a program in place for the removal of that rust. This building is the first building you see as you come off of Main Street. It's a focal point. Right next to it is a park that's been recently planted, and it is the first thing you see. And I personally think this should be a spectacular sight coming in. So, I think you're going to have problems with the Corten steel, and I think you need to come up with some sort of a plan to take care of the rust removal that you're going to see on those.
You have experience with this type of product that's currently out of the market, am I correct?
Correct.
And you have experience with the extent that it rusts and any leaching onto material, am I correct?
Correct.
But you wouldn't be opposed to making sure that you keep an eye on this and program it to be implemented to make sure if there is some type of rust, we can go for it, am I correct?
Correct. I mean, again, the ownership is going to retain these, this building as a rental property, want to maintain it in tip-top shape. And I agree, it's an important piece, it's an important piece for me. I live in town, I understand the significance of that location. I also like when a building weathers, which is why I use or specify Corten from time to time, because I think that's part of the history of architecture. So, you create something now, and it weathers. We're saving the existing lower portion of the building. I wanted that experience that sort of happened on the upper portions of the building. I don't want long drips of rust running down the facade and onto the sidewalk. But that is part of a building feeling like it belongs in its place at its time.
So, you have no objection to putting in sort of a, some sort of a maintenance plan for that?
I will highly recommend that to ownership, yes.
Well, about the condition of approval, but...
No problem.
And going back to the elevations, when you look at this building, the, I guess it's a third floor, well, the third floor does not, the windows do not match the windows below. This is upper two stories, the windows do not match below. And since this is the facade that you're going to see, this is, I'm talking about the west elevation, I think that your windows, it's shown on Plan Z5. I think your windows need to be readdressed to get them to be more harmonious with the windows below. I understand what you were attempting to do. You're attempting to give this facade an entirely new look, but the top two stories, in my opinion, are much too busy. They need to be banded together. You have a horizontal band coming in from the north, also coming in from the west, from the south side, but they stop in two bays in each, in each direction. The whole facade needs to be tied together, I think. And it also carries around to the north elevation.
When you design the building, you design it in a particular way, am I correct?
Certainly. Again, having lived in town for the past nine years, I'm extremely familiar with Cookman and this building and the importance of this particular structure to the town. What I did, what I provided testimony for earlier, was I paid attention to the rhythm of the existing structure. So, I take the column breaks between the windows, and I bring them, I extrude them through, so that rhythm is continuous. I also use the existing window as a module, so to speak, so the width of that also continues. When I try to, try, I very much keep those lines in line. So, when you break from the old to the new, you'll hopefully understand that it carried those column lines through. I then also took the herringbone pattern on the front facade and wrapped that, incorporated that into some of my banding. So, I very painstakingly took dimensions that were part of that rhythm and reapply them to the new rhythm. So, while the material changes, the actual map of it is similar, and that's kind of... Similar, yes. Like to break the old from the new, so you really let that older piece breathe, and you let the newer piece start to actually fade, even though it feels on top of the old.
Now, architecturally, you don't want to match the newer part of the building exactly like the lower part of the building, am I correct?
Correct. I think it would take away from the significance of the architecture, of the existing architecture.
But you want to bring some of those elements into the newer or modern part of the building, which you didn't accomplish in this part, am I correct?
Correct. In consideration, I can't tell you how many times we tried to, with the sort of paler blue, really work the RNG, you know, clay of the existing building to make sure those two elements are harmonious. But I do think in 2019, you're supposed to set your new mark. And I hope, you know, people understand that I tried to do that in a sort of elegant way.
And you say you have the same width of the windows as you go further?
The banding on the, you have this bullet plan up there, but you see this, it's about two feet approximately between. I reiterate that with that. So, this opening, this module, while the window shapes are different, the size of that opening is the same, that rhythm is the same.
And you don't think that it would be better to have a matching windows?
I think, I presented what I think is best for that particular, for this particular design.
I don't have any other questions.
I know that, that we had spoken, last time we got together in front, where we were on the north side, where you were going into the residential area. There was some discussion about adding some vertical windows there?
In this area?
Yes, in that area. Where did we land with that? Because I think that that's something that the board was interested in?
It was something that you guys were interested in, and we kind of shuffled past it. Again, you know, it's somewhat subjective. I tried to follow, I can only describe what I think I tried to do, where the residential buildings, particularly on that block, have that recessed residential portion. If the, I don't want the residential portion to feel like the retail portion. So, I tried to, again, just set that back in line with some of the other facades on that street and create, you know, for me, cities are about this sort of urban fabric, these voids and these solids, and voids and solids. So, I want this very open approach to the retail, really emphasize the retail, and sort of privatize the residential, or is...
What is the width that we're talking about in that section?
From here to here?
Correct.
Seventy, seventy.
Certainly, we were speaking of either them being on the facade, on the facade facing north or on the inside. I don't recall which way you were leaning or that.
I think it's on the facade.
On the facade?
Something to break it up so it wasn't separate.
That's right, we're inside of it.
We're talking, on the north side, yeah. Yeah, that, keep going, residential, residential, those seven feet, the same seven feet. I think that that's why I was just getting, trying to get clarity, if that's what we were concerned about, that that being a bit heavy.
I mean, this is glass with a glass transom above, so that four-foot section has some, gives some glass, that'd be a setback. And the setback is a requirement of Boca, the building code, to also not swing the door onto the street. So, that's why that steps in a little bit.
Is there anything else that the board, have any other questions of the architect?
So, my notes from Mike O'Leary last meeting?
Go ahead.
He did mention adding, you know, a, and he has heart of a window, so I'm not sure what happens with vertical, but that they would be able to know.
I remember that.
So, I don't know, that was like, if you guys are thinking of a vertical light, you know, like, on a traditional, you have a door, and then it's like that six-inch wide pane that you feed the ceiling, or you're talking more of a...
Well, I think the issue you brought up was that, right now, it's proposed to be storage.
Right, that's where we kind of landed, because it was supposed to be...
Correct. I mean, today, with delivery systems and Amazon and all the, people need somewhere to do that now. We specifically designed it so when you walked in, you didn't see, you didn't see that. The first thing you saw was a closet with boxes, so we put it on that facade. That's the reason.
Does anybody else have any other questions regarding testimony?
Yeah, I guess so. Regarding the lighting testimony that we heard tonight, I mean, from an architectural perspective, is there another approach that could potentially still accomplish the objectives of safety while, you know, meeting whatever architectural guidelines you had for this?
A lot of good words in the architect's note, but I did just look up the manufacturer spec on that, on both those fixtures. They do come in a range of light temperature, which is, you know, this is what partners real, you know, one of his major complaints about glare. So, I'm sure how up to speed everybody is on light temperature, but so when you get up into that 4,000 K range?
We don't want that.
To blue, like the high beams, comfortable light level for human vision is in the 2,700 to 3,000 K. So, those fixtures do come a range of light temperatures, and you can specify that it not exceed maybe 3,000 or 3,500.
I think that that's a, that's a very reasonable request, because it's...
The fixtures are internal. They're throwing that appropriate amount of light, but sometimes it's the temperature that really contributes to the, to the perception of glare.
My other thought, and I don't know if this is something that would be acceptable either, is that maybe the rear lights can be put on a motion sensor? Since there isn't usually normal activity in the rear alley?
Okay, so we were just, oh, let me just clarify, what were we just talking about? I thought we were talking about the west side, the west side of the building.
Oh, I think, I think...
Light temperature can apply to all the...
Any of the lights, yeah.
But certainly, a motion sensor is a great idea for the rear of the building.
But that would only be for the rear, isn't it?
Correct, yeah. I think, I think the side of the building is more active and, you know, there's a park there, there's obviously activity, but the rear is...
And there are people driving in that alley.
Sure, yeah. But the rear alley is pretty much dormant unless someone comes out the back door to take out the garbage and access whatever's back there.
If we think that that's a, is that a potential...
Well, I think...
I don't know about feasibility or...
You're going to have, you have an existing fixture back there that does provide some light. Once you remove that, if you're only putting motion sensors back there with lights, it's going to be completely dark back there. You know, the police are driving by, and they want to look down the alley, and they're not going to be able to. That's my thought on it.
If this weren't a residential structure, I would agree with you. With the ability for someone to come home at different hours during the night, to have, to know that that's lit, and I believe, from a safety standpoint, for the rear access of the building, that should be, at least one of the fixtures should be on all the time. If the other two were on motion sensors, I wouldn't necessarily have as much concern, but there really should be light on in your building at all times.
And I will just, you know, I feel like that most of the residents are going to come through on Cookman Ave. I mean, that's...
They are.
That, I don't see, I don't foresee a lot of residents thinking, oh, this is a great back door. You know, unless they're coming from Lake Ave side, which is possible.
If they walked on Lake Ave, they would be coming through back.
Yeah.
But then, then I would think that if you're a resident there, that you would want it to be lit as opposed to the motion sensor.
True.
I think we can create and knock it down, those are 10,000 or 3,000. Remember, those are the down lights, those aren't the ones, you know, so...
So, that, so that door that's back there would be one that's accessible for the people that are residents there.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, and this, I'm like, well, what is, who would, but you might drop off your groceries that way. You might come in at night and, after you've been away and load that way, if you can't find a spot. So, I feel that might get more activity than it normally has.
See, I'm always concerned, when a motion sensor, it only turns on when you hit a certain point. So, you're ready to walk in before that kicks on.
I think that probably a good solution would be to knock down the temperature glass. That would probably satisfy us a bit more with the understanding of the building.
And you testified that it was, they were going to be 12 feet high, right?
Fifteen.
Or fifteen?
The rear, the rear's located at 15, the sides are located at nine feet.
Okay. Because I do believe, I don't think there are windows on the building behind...
That's correct.
On the VFW, former VFW building?
Not now.
Not now, right, right. Right, right.
And we said that, and we said that the lights will not, will not shine onto the other building.
Now, no, they will, definitely. The light throw will definitely hit the other building. That's correct.
At this point.
From, from the ground to 15 feet up?
From the ground to 15 feet up.
I mean, would it, can we, it looks like the, the western facade lights are, tend to have a little less throw, or?
Yeah, they're completely different fixtures.
I mean, is that a possibility, just putting that same fixture on the rear, or that way you at least minimize the?
We're still going to, just scale it. It'll still be in the building, but at least it's. Right, but it'll still be about, you know, eight, 12, 14, those different fixtures in the alley.
And they have a glass lens in the front as opposed to.
Yeah.
I mean, how high up is that? If this thing's going to fly across?
No, no, it, it, it projects downward, probably at a 60-degree angle.
So the light's like beaming 90 straight out.
It's not, it's coming down.
Yeah, sure.
It's not going to hit that building at 12 or 15, you know, whatever the mounting height is, that light starts to ascend, so.
Right.
It breaks directly underneath the building.
It looks like, just guessing, it'd be like about two by the time it hit the building. Just looking at what's shown on the western facade, if you were to flip that around to the rear, the level would come down a bit, I think. The further you get from the fixture, as opposed to what's currently in the rear.
So does it make sense for us to suggest the same fixture for the back?
I think that could help. I think that would help with glare and the light pollution that's been a concern.
And the idea was to try and, with the elimination of the existing cobra head, to provide adequate and safe light for that whole area.
And this other fixture would still be, you know, if we, if we move that fixture that's on the western wall to the, to the southern wall, it would still be mounted, you said nine feet in there, 12 feet? What was it?
Well, to get the light levels that we have, we would want it mounted at probably nine feet. We probably don't think it's more.
Can we, all right, can we go over that again? Because we've been talking about nine feet on the west side.
Right.
15 on the rear.
Fifteen feet on the north side, no, it's on the south side.
But let's remember that, because it's also sloping pretty dramatically, so.
Okay, so which ones are not 15 and not 9?
So these are 9.
Right.
And across the rear of the building, they're now at 15.
15, okay. All right, we got that.
So if the, if the request is to have the same fixture mounted across the rear.
Yes. What, what would you see that the downside of that would be?
It's not going to be as bright as it is at the HCL.
Okay.
Sounds good, mate.
That's, well, that was our goal, right? No?
I was, you're calling it up. I think we met your goal.
No, 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 that we're not, that we're not hitting the other building as high, or as bad, as bad.
That's correct.
Okay. But you still, the people will still be able to see, they have to go into the back of the building and don't feel sick, and they'll still feel safe.
Now, is one of these other south facade going to be on at all times, the other two are on motion type, right?
No, I, I think.
I think we should leave it all.
It sounds like the motion wasn't a good idea, so.
So it's basically dusted off?
Yes.
We are going to put the maximum.
Yeah, the light temperature.
What did, we were in on 3,000?
And number one, 3,000.
A max of 3,000.
Absolute max.
Go ahead, you have something? At this point?
Well, I would recommend a condition that the same fixtures that are on the western facade be put on the southern facade.
Right.
With a maximum temperature of 3,000 Kelvin all around.
All right, I agree, I agree.
And a 15-foot down at night.
And what's that?
And a 15-foot down at night.
No, nine.
Now they bring it.
Nine.
Nine all the way around.
So it's.
Nine foot, yeah. It's clear. Yes, yeah. Well, they're, they're warm. So we're doing nine feet both on the western and the southern?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. I guess that, that, if we feel strongly enough about the, we're going back to the front facade once again, how strongly do we feel about, about that wall that, that we were suggesting that there be some sort of a window, of some sort?
I, I don't feel strongly about it, but I'm one voice on the word. I think the testimony was, I, I kind of agree that the residential portion should be.
Should be different.
A little more dormant, but.
I read my, my cryptic notes right from the last time.
Go ahead.
There was some discussion about putting glass in the door as a.
But it, I thought there was, did we already put it?
Well, that's, I think that's what we, are cool with, if that's a technical word. I think we can modify that condition to make the door, and the transom above, make that glass.
Okay.
That works.
That's right. Okay. Is that all right?
Works for me.
I just wanted to mention something about the Core Ten, that, that the, I mean, first the fact that it weathers and all, that change is, I think, a really nice aspect of it. And I heard there was a sort of a look back that it was okay to put in place some aspect of maintenance, but it's really that six-month period. I worked, I had the same exact complaints about a project with Core Ten, and it was, people were very concerned about that issue, but it was very fast, depending on the weather of that, I mean, it's very fast. So it's just that really initial piece, having that maintenance, and then it's.
I would imagine before occupancy, when those go on, we're still doing interior elements and wiping the place down. I, I have a funny feeling it will be done before, you know, residents occupy the building, so they can do the last-minute power wash of those sections, and I think, like, they'll redo that, yeah.
Sounds good. And it sounds like Jim's concern is that, just that if there were an issue down the road, it would be addressed.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think also the look of it, when people feel, because it's so bright at the beginning, and people feel concerned, but then it changes fast.
Yeah.
Okay. There was also, if we look on the planner's report, we were talking about, you guys could refresh my memory a little bit. It looked like we had two different numbers regarding parking. One was 13.5, one was 17. So did we determine which, which number we were supposed to be going with here?
I believe under the code, it's 13.5.
And what's, what's the one that's underneath that? It kind of says that on the right, on RSIS?
No.
Is that something different?
Yeah. So it's basically two, two different standards. This is, you know, something that we're actually working on.
The redevelopment plan has one standard for number of parking spaces per bedroom, right? 1.5. RSIS has different standards. RSIS is the state overall standards for parking in all residential development, whether it's in the middle of the downtown or on a, you know, suburban cul-de-sac. So what a lot of cities have done, municipalities have done, is to get a waiver basically from the state, from RSIS for specific development. We haven't done that. So technically, by the letter of the law, we are supposed to follow the RSIS. But for the purposes, which I think is more important for us, of calculating the parking fee. It is per the redevelopment plan standard.
That's correct. When you look at the language of the redevelopment.
I just wanted to be sure. Okay. Does anybody, anybody else on the board have any other questions? Do our professionals have any other questions of our architect? Do, does the public have any questions of the architect?
Yes, thank you. Warner Baumkartner, Fifth Avenue. I'm just curious if the architect or anyone involved in the architectural design is aware that this is a national and state-designated historic district? He's shaking his head no.
No, not aware of that.
You're unaware of that. You are aware, hopefully, that this is a redevelopment area governed by a redevelopment document?
I'm well aware of that.
Okay. Are you aware of the design standards that are part of that redevelopment?
Yes.
Warner, what's your real question? Tell me, what's your question?
Okay.
What do you want to know?
I'd like to know, basically, why the design standards are being superseded or ignored in this particular project. Was it waiver or a?
If he wants to look at a specific design standard within the plan, then he can ask that question, or just give a general question, that some design standard is being violated. I think it's a problem.
Okay, my, my question then is, is a waiver or an exemption or a variance being requested for the design standards?
Same objection. If he wants to make reference to a particular design element within the plan that he thinks is violated, then, let me finish, please.
Okay.
Then he can ask that question, but simply ask, are you violating this, or I think it's a problem.
Are you seeing that there's something in particular that's being violated?
No, I'm asking, as part of this application, is a exemption, a waiver, or a, whatever you call it in your legal parlays, from the design standards that are imposed?
No, because we don't think we're violating anything within the redevelopment plan. We are in full compliance with the terms of the redevelopment plan, except to the extent that variance relief or design review has been requested or accepted.
Interesting, okay. All right. Thank you. Interesting answer.
Okay, can we open, we have a motion to open for public comment on this application. This is the final.
Showable.
Final time. Sorry? Okay. Comment? Want to swear in, Warner?
Sure.
Please raise your right hand, gee, solemnly swear, the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Warner Baumkartner, Fifth Avenue, City Historian, Asbury Park. I authored the design standards that are supposed to regulate the construction in the downtown area as per the redevelopment plan. The nexus of those design standards is the state's Downtown Revitalization Institute, of which I was the first graduate from the city of Asbury Park as a city official, which made the city eligible for additional grant funding and points when seeking state funds. So I'm, I'm quite familiar with what the standards are supposed to be. They basically encourage development that is consistent with the architectural heritage of the historic downtown. That would be traditional storefront design, traditional building design of scale, rhythm, massing, things of that nature, and not modernizing or creating modern buildings that don't fit with the predominant architectural heritage of the downtown. That is the intent of the design standards, in a nutshell. There are specifics in there. I'm not going to go into it because we're way beyond that with this application, but in my opinion, this project does not meet those design standards, does not meet the goals or even the spirit of the design standards. Number two, the lighting plan. I appreciate you folks trying to improve the lighting plan to some degree, but realistically, the only way to really fix it is to scrap those fixtures. Those fixtures are terrible fixtures. They are bright no matter what the color temperature. They produce glare no matter what the color temperature. They are a major source of light pollution. You should ask for different fixtures that are fully shielded. Fully shielded means you don't see the source of the light. You don't see the window the light comes through, you don't see the bulb the light comes from. You only see the effect of the light, that is, the ground lit up in front of you. It doesn't light the building next door. You don't even notice by looking at it that there's a fixture up there. That's a fully shielded fixture, and that's really what's required to meet the modern-day standards to prevent light pollution and impairing people's vision at night. Those two things are really all I can testify to. I didn't see the rest of the application, but from an architectural point of view, I don't believe it meets the standards of the redevelopment plan and the design guidelines that are published as part of that. And I don't think that this is a very good lighting plan. It really should be an up-to-date, modern plan, not one that just says, oh, it's safe, so we're going to throw bright lights everywhere willy-nilly, just because we can. That's it. I think that would be a better project if both of those things were accomplished. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comment?
Motion to close.
Sure.
Okay. All right, we have, we have a number of items that, that came up as rails as a result of this discussion, if we were going to be putting a resolution forward. Do you have those, or do you want me to, or what would you like to do?
I only have the ones that we discussed this evening.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Sure, if I can go through my list.
Okay.
The conditions that I noted during the course of the hearing is first, that the applicant will provide a maintenance plan in order to ensure that rust is cleaned off of the building if the rust leaches onto the brick at any time. The second condition.
Can we add sidewalk, building and sidewalk?
Building and sidewalk.
Yeah, and the ground plane, yeah.
Thank you. And sidewalk, I would add that. And the lighting temperature for all fixtures will not exceed a maximum of 3,000 Kelvin K. The applicant will.
Exterior.
The exterior, correct. Of all exterior features, the applicant will install the same types of features on the rear wall as those proposed for the western wall, and at the same nine-foot mounting height.
Fixtures, yeah.
Fixtures, can I say?
Yeah. You said features.
Fixtures. I said fixtures, I'm sorry.
And those fixtures are B, am I correct?
So fixture, those were the ones that were depicted on the plan.
I'm sorry, A.
As A, I believe. So it's, it's A. And finally, the applicant will install glass in the door on the front facade of the building, and also the transom above that door.
For the residential.
For the residential portion.
Sure.
All right, there will also be, or is that it?
It's all that I have.
Okay, there's also the, obviously, the, the funding into the, the parking for 13.5 spaces. There was also the request for the height variance, and there'll be the.
Street too.
The height variance. There was also discussion of that there will be no runoff on the walkways, right? We had that discussion?
That's correct.
Stormwater will.
The stormwater?
To the city system.
Right? There was, there's also an issue that you would go in the city council for right-of-way on the front facade, the cornice or canopy or whatnot. And you were going to be amend all your plans to be current as to what all the discussions have been?
That is correct.
I know that Jim, you had something about the.
Ballards.
Moving the ballards? Moving the ballards?
Yes, they're going to, they're going to move the ballards from the property line to within three feet of the building.
We need some clarification, because I mentioned the, you know, the building department and the utility companies may require three feet clear if we move that. Right now, they're set at 3.6, so they would clear three feet. If we move them in six inches, we would encumber the three feet. So I don't know if that will be viable. I mean, that really comes down to building department and.
Just worded if possible, as per construction.
Right, as per construction would be fine.
And the lighting to be on dusk till dawn as well?
That's, that's, that's.
And also.
I'll say your part, say.
The last, the last time we met, there was discussion of putting planters or something along the side, on the western side of the entrance, for safety sake because of the cars that were going.
Sure, yeah, yeah, just additional. Sure, yeah, yes, additional.
We have notes that the ballards down the side of...
Just the entrance, the public entrance.
On the public, on the sidewalk area?
Oh, we were talking about the entrance here.
It was under the canopy, it was for... In this area. To prevent a vehicle, if a vehicle were to come up. Yeah. Yeah, ballards or planters. Like, so they're not ballards, can we do a railing of some sort?
I don't know, it wasn't here.
So my... Yeah, my notes from our meeting in March was, we talked about ballards at the corner entrance to the building for safety, or planter boxes to expand upon the adjacent park. And that was all about the vehicular conflict safety, just at the corner.
Right, at that corner.
Just at that corner.
Go with the planner elements.
Doesn't it function technically?
No. I do have a note about them being in the right-of-way, so I would say if they're in the right-of-way, include it in the mayor council talk. If they're not, be free to clear.
Do yourself a favor, put it on your property. And they'll need to be right-of-way approval for that plan on the side of building option.
And we'd also spoken about the street tree, that depending on what size it is right now, that it encompasses sometimes the wall, the wall zone there. They should be pruned to minimize the conflicts with the pedestrians, that's in Clark, Clark, Clayton, H, page eight of twelve, C1. We can put that there, please? Start the replacement.
I thought that's going to be replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Replacement is fine.
And we're good with the bike rack?
And the bike rack, right?
Yes, bike rack's good.
Is there anything else? Has that anybody...
Satellite, no satellite issues on the exterior of the building?
No, we stated that there would not be any.
Would not be any.
That's part of the testimony.
Correct. I don't have anything else unless somebody else does. That's it? Everybody all right? Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I move that we approve this request with the amendments that have been suggested.
Second.
Councilwoman Evelyn Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
No.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Barbara Krizak?
Yes.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have some resolutions to approve. To you.
Well, Jack's not here.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
We've got the resolutions.
Yeah, but I think this one we already adopted.
We already did the conflict planner?
Yeah, but I think he had sent it back out because it said, it listed the wrong planner.
That's right.
Yeah.
So now we have the right planner.
The right planner.
So do we have to do this again?
I think we do have to.
Okay.
Adopt the amendment.
All right, let's adopt the amendment. Okay, this is for the board conflict planner appointed inside engineering. Can I get a motion to...
Barbara, there's a, the first line on the first page, there's a typo. It says, need for the retention of a to-render planner to render. Take out that first to-render.
All right, the first to-render, are you ready?
And with that change, move to...
Hey, I'm just removing reminder.
Yeah, the first to-render. Okay?
Done.
All right. Jim, Jim did a motion to approve?
Councilwoman Evelyn Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lem, I'm sorry, Barbara Krizak?
Yes. All right, we have our next resolution about regarding the summer experience. I know that there was a modification to that, do you want to go over that?
Yes, modification in the third whereas on the first page, under the third whereas, number five. Originally it says sign used to permit the addition of a nine-square-foot wall sign with halo lighting. What's been added is to be mounted among, above the front entrance of the building as set forth in exhibit eight three, and to permit a change to the text of the exhibit seven point six square foot ground-mounted sign to say tandem cycle as set forth in exhibit A dash two. This is only a clarification to what was in those exhibits, that's making it into this resolution. And then the second change is on page two, under now therefore being resolved, number two. The extension of the prior approval is hereby granted for a period of three years from May 2019 by this board, subject to the applicant requesting any extension from the redevelopment agency, and that is the mayor and city council, beyond three years. Those are the only two changes to that resolution.
Wasn't the extension already granted though?
Perhaps this was more of a clarification?
It is a clarification.
Okay.
To make it, to bring it in.
Was there another that the, the street number would be put on the left-hand side of the door, door frame?
That was in the testimony, I think. I think that was in their testimony.
Okay. I thought it was part of that clarification with the name going above the door and the door number going to the left of the, left of the door. But I have a couple of other typos. The first whereas, the first page, it says, the second line, it says, the applicant is the owner, and then later in that same line, the last three words, and, or four words, and is the tenant. I think that can be stricken. The applicant is the owner and the tenant?
Yes.
Okay. That needs to be addressed. And then, number three on the next page, the relief required by, it says required by, does not require any...
Okay, the relief requested by the asking, you should have the applicant?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Does not require.
I will change that right now.
Any other suggestions?
No.
Based on those changes?
Move to adopt the resolution with those changes.
Second.
May, Councilwoman Evelyn Clayton?
I can't move on.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Street, I have the side backs is not here. Rick Lem, no, here, Barbara Krizak?
I can't move on either.
Do we have, are we good? Yes? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
All right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.